All right, everybody, it is seven o'clock. All right, it is now seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call to order the City of Lake Illinois Planning Commission meeting for Monday, December 11th, 2023. First item is to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Second item for this evening is to approve the agenda for this evening, which includes approval of minutes of our previous meeting. We have three public hearings, new unfinished business, followed by City Council and upcoming Planning Commission meetings.
I move to approve the agenda for tonight.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stiles, second by Commissioner Brees to approve the agenda for this evening. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Third item is to approve the minutes from our previous meeting of November 13th. The date is listed incorrect on the agenda, but of 2023. Any edits, alterations, comments? Entertainer motion for approval.
Motion to approve the minutes.
On second.
Motion by Commissioner Jeffrey, second by Commissioner Ray Camp to approve the minutes of our previous meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We are about to move into our public hearings. There are three of them. If anybody in the audience has not had a chance to fill out one of these papers, I think they're somewhere.
They are in the back.
In the far back, we'll take those. Our first one will be public hearing, item 4A, the Carmelite nun conditional use permit. Hear from city staff first before opening for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, the applicant for tonight's conditional use permit is the Carmelite nuns of St. Paul. The property is located at 8251 Mount Carmel Road, which is a private drive off of DeMontreville Trail. The property is just under 90 acres. It is currently zoned public facilities and guided for institutional in the city's comprehensive plan. The request comes before you tonight because they currently do not have a conditional use permit. The property, which is a monastery, is required to have a conditional use permit in that zoning district. Right now, it is considered illegal nonconformity. Since the applicants are proposing to expand the monastery, they then need to come into compliance with city code requirements, which is that conditional use permit. And I will note that the site likely came before you last year with the Carmelite Hermitage conditional use permit and the Jesuit conditional use permit. So this is the last of those religious organizations in that area, and it is separate from the other two. So then I have an elevation view and a floor plan of the proposed addition. The proposed addition is relatively minor in the scope of the existing building and the site, the parcel as a whole. It is to add an ADA bathroom, speak room, and parlor. Then I have a very busy table on the next slide, which is the public facility and shoreline overlay standards. This, in short, is just to note that they do comply with all of those standards. This application was sent out for agency review. We received comments from the fire department regarding drivelines, parking areas, fire suppression, fire alarm systems, building addressing and access requirements. A condition of approval has been added to address this memo. Then the landscape architect also provided comments that due to the small expansion, that this is an existing monetary, that the site disturbance is less than one acre, and the parcel is extremely large and already heavily vegetated, that they felt comfortable waiving the tree preservation and landscape requirements. The Valley Branch Watershed District did provide a comment that no watershed permit would be required with this work, and the DNR did not provide comments. Then I have 12 recommended findings with this conditional use permit. The first is that the proposed use would not be detrimental to public health, safety, and comfort. The second is that the proposed use conforms with the comprehensive plan. The third is that the proposed use is permitted in the public facility zoning district, subject to a conditional use permit. Then, the proposed use meets the provisions of Article 16, public and semi-public districts. Number five is the proposed use meets the shoreline regulations. Six is that the proposed use should be compatible in appearance with the existing character. Seven is that the proposed monastery addition would be set back far from the public right-of-way and adjacent landowners as to not create a nuisance. Eight is that the proposed monastery would be served adequately by public services and facilities. Nine is that the proposed use would not create excessive requirements of public cost. Then, the proposed use should not be detrimental to persons' property or the general public welfare. Eleven is that with the new direct access off of DeMontreville Trail, the proposed use should not create traffic congestion. And 12 is that the proposed use would not affect natural or scenic features. After all that, I do have three recommended conditions. The first is that all necessary permits are obtained, then that the fire department memo is addressed, and lastly is that standard condition with the 12-month deadline. A public hearing was published in the local paper on December 1st and sent to surrounding property owners on November 29th. At this time, staff has not received any public comment. With that, I have a motion. I can stand for questions. We do have a representative for the applicant here, if you have any questions for them.
Thanks. Questions from the commissioners?
So, just to confirm, if you can put the picture back up. All that's being added is that new home, is that correct? Is that...
Just that, that shorter addition.
Okay.
Correct, and it would contain...
And then, no other main changes than to the, to the trees or anything else? It's pretty much just building on the space?
Building on the existing building. I think they're taking out a couple of trees and doing some rearranging to the parking, but in general, site disturbance is less than an acre.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Any questions?
Just to confirm, it's in the packet, but I don't know that you touched on it. This property is on well and septic, correct?
Correct.
And in the packet, it says the required capacity of the current well or septic, this will have no impact to it.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And you said watershed did not need a permit for this one?
Correct.
Okay. Additional questions for city staff or any questions for the applicant? Perfect. Okay, hearing none. This is a, this is a public hearing, so we will need to entertain a motion to open, and then it looks like probably close it.
I move to open public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, seconded by Commissioner Jeffrey to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Public hearing is open at 7:07 PM. Correct? Nobody in the audience wishes to speak on this item? Perfect.
You want to? Okay. The applicant would like to say a few words.
Perfect.
Do you want to wait until after the public hearing is?
Oh, yes, yeah, let's wait for the applicant until we close the public hearing. That would work. Thank you. I know digital copies received late. Perfect.
Correct.
All right. Without any public comment, we can entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ray Camp, seconded by Commissioner Stiles to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Public hearing for item 4A is closed at 7:08 PM. And now we can hear from the applicant. And if you don't mind as well, just name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Reverend John Burns at 8249 Mount Carmel Road. On the same property as the Discalce Carmelite Nuns, I am chaplain for the sisters and representing them this evening. With me is Mr. Tom Nanamaker from McGough Construction Company, who did all of the paperwork for this conditional use permit and will be the representative for the construction company that would like to build this new addition. We are here tonight mostly to answer questions. We think that Sophia did a wonderful job in putting together this package, so we don't have much to say. Just one point that I would like to bring out, though, is that there are four sisters in the community who are elderly and somewhat infirm. The building was built by McGough Construction Company in 1954, and it does not currently have an ADA bathroom anywhere in the, in the building. And so, in addition to providing ADA amenities for the general public, there will also be the addition of an ADA bathroom in their infirmary to care for the needs of the sisters. So the purpose of the addition was twofold. One, to provide an ADA environment for the public, but secondly, to upgrade the infirmary facilities for the elderly sisters. In answer to the commissioners' questions, there will be four trees that will be, have to be removed for the project. All four were planted by the sisters themselves. None of the 60 acres of natural trees on the property will need to be touched in order to complete the project. And secondly, there was a question about where the new addition was. So on that picture, it would be on the far right side of the picture. That is the new addition that sticks out from the current building. So with that, I have nothing more to say. I don't know if Tom wants to say anything, but as I said, we came mostly to answer any questions that you might have.
The exterior is, the intent is to match the brick, to match the style of the building that was there, to match the detail cues that are, that are in the existing building. So it's going to look like it belongs there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for the applicants? Pretty straightforward. Appreciate the work that's gone into doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend John. Thank you, Tom. All right, with the public hearing closed on this, we do have a motion provided by city staff.
Move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for the dislaced Carmelite nuns of the St. Paul Monastery addition with the listed conditions based on the findings listed in the staff report.
I second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stiles, seconded by Commissioner Bullock to recommend approval. We'll go to Commissioner Stiles there for any discussion.
It's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's not, I mean, I like the idea of opening it up for the nuns, so they can have a place as well. Pretty, I mean, it's pretty minor what they're doing, so I'm for it.
I agree. Not only is it going to be ADA approved, but also not much is going to be done to the surrounding area, and it's not going to pose any, any, anything for any of the neighbors, or, you know, it's a pretty large piece of property, so I think we're good to go.
Yep. Holding to all zoning standards, nothing seems different other than the legal nonconforming, so straightforward.
Yeah, the, I read through all the paperwork on it. They've been around for a good period of time, and this is so minimal. I have, I support it. Think it's a great, great addition and bringing it up to compliance. Happy to help in any way we can.
Perfect. Anything additional? With that, the motion on the table is to recommend approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and item 4A is closed. We'll be moving on to item 4B, again, another public hearing for this evening. This is the at-home apartments preliminary plat and PUD. Back to the city staff.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission.
So my name is Nathan First. I am your consulting city planner here to talk about the at-home apartments. This is a preliminary plat and planned unit development application. So, as stated, we have two requests that the applicant has made to the city. First and foremost, the location of this property is very close to where we are currently in City Hall, so really, it's, it's pretty close in the Village planning area, so on Wildflower Drive and 39th. So in terms of a land use analysis, the, the image that you see on the right of the screen, this is the city's zoning map, and so this is where we start when requests are made to the city with reviews of really all of the site improvements. So, in this case, we have a seven and a half acre site with both parcels combined. That's the combined total of the land. The comprehensive plan guides this particular property and the area of the properties near it for the Village Mixed Use District. There is a consistent zoning district, which you see on the map on the right. That is the Village Mixed Use Zoning District. What's being proposed here is a planned unit development, which creates sort of a unique zoning situation where we'll have what results in the VMX PUD. So what's being proposed here is 48 attached to single-family dwellings. We can call these townhomes for the purposes of this discussion. So I've just toggled the, this image on the right here is the future land use map, so you can see pretty similar land use guidance between the city's comprehensive plan and zoning map. So on the screen, this is the proposal. This is from the applicant's preliminary plat plan. You can see those 48 units are split between a variety of different structures. Some of those structures are attached with just two units, going all the way up to a structure with six attached units. So these all have been reviewed as attached single-family units or townhomes. On the site, there is one stormwater pond that would provide stormwater management for the entire development. So on the west parcel, that stormwater would be taken, collected, taken from that side, and routed into that stormwater pond on Outlot A. So when we look at planned unit developments, we do have to make sure that they meet the minimum criteria and identified objectives that the city has within its city code. The minimum criteria for a planned unit development are, there are three of them. First and foremost, the lot area has to be five acres or greater, which is the case here. Open space is required, 20% minimum for residents of the planned unit development, which is the case here on the areas of the lots outside of the buildings and the road right-of-way. And then the street layout. Planned unit developments basically have to be consistent with the city's long-range transportation plans that are found in the city's comprehensive plan. So there are also objectives that planned unit developments will need to meet if they qualify based on the criteria. This development appears to meet four of those identified objectives in the city code. Promotion of integrated land uses, allowing for a mixture of residential, commercial, and public facilities. The establishment of appropriate transitions, transitions, excuse me, between different land uses. The accommodation of various or all housing types. And coordination of architectural styles. So when we look at a preliminary plat, this is a requirement when developers come in and request a subdivided property. We look at a number of different standards to ensure that the development meets the city's code. We start with the land use analysis, which we've talked about. The bulk standards for the property, these things include height of the structures, setbacks, et cetera. We look at the trees that are being removed from the site. Do they meet the city's tree preservation requirements, landscaping? We look at grading, stormwater and wetland impacts, if there are any wetlands on the property. We look at the proposal for, for public infrastructure. This includes things like streets, access locations, city utilities, and then we review for parkland dedication. In this case, the developer is requesting planned unit development flexibility for one primary issue, and then through the review process, we identified a need for, at this point in time, as proposed, another flexibility for landscaping. So the primary flexibility that this development requires is to have multiple buildings or principal uses on one parcel. So that's as opposed to creating a separate parcel for each of these units, as sometimes is the case. So here again, this is the preliminary plat plan. As I go to the next slide, you can see I've really just identified the, there are three lots in this development. There's block one, lot one, that's the, the west parcel, block two, lot one, that's the east parcel, and then Outlot A, that is the stormwater pond. Outlot A would be eventually deeded to the city as required for this type of development. So looking at the bulk standards, these are the setback requirements and those types of things. The long story short here is that this project does meet the city's bulk standard requirements. This includes lot area, lot width, lot density, impervious surface, setbacks from front, side, and rear yards, height of the buildings, et cetera. So we also review projects in the city's Village Mixed Use District for compliance with the city's Design Standards Manual. This is a manual that's adopted by the city and is found on the city's website. This requires considerations for site design and building design, and you can see some of those specific considerations listed on this slide under those terms. So design standard review for site design. So really, the things that we're looking for is building placement. Buildings should be oriented to the street in order to create an sort of engaging pedestrian atmosphere, streetscape. So we're looking for things like plantings and sidewalks being provided. In this case, sidewalks are on both sides of the street in this proposal. Landscaping is required, of course, and overstory trees and foundation plantings are one way to accomplish the site requirements for design. And then parking. Parking should largely be screened from higher-volume corridors, and that is the case here through enclosed parking. So as I move on to the buildings, we have some slightly different considerations for facades and things of that nature. So you can see one example up on the screen. This is one of that six-unit attached building. You'll see that the developer is proposing to vary the facades between the units in order to provide a little variety with some consistent colors and concepts of theming throughout. So you can see a couple more examples on the right side of this slide. Things that we're looking for, again, form and facade, looking for consistent design across, across the development. Specifically, we're also looking at the types of materials and the colors that are proposed. They appear to meet, in this case, the, the standards. The mass of the structures and the scale relative to the surrounding development. In this case, there is pretty similar development, at least to the, the west, or, yeah, the west of this parcel. Roofs are consistently designed here, and signage would have to be consistent if proposed. We will have one development monument sign with this proposal. So I did want to touch on tree preservation, and so on the screen, it's kind of tough to see from a distance, but up on the screen is the tree preservation plan. This was included in the staff report and packet. You can see all of the tree removals marked with red Xs on that plan. Those tree removals are required because the site obviously has to be graded for this, this development and the improvements that it includes. So in total, there's 2,752 caliper inches on site. There will be over 2,000 caliper inches removed. However, it's important to note that the city's tree mitigation standards don't include all of the trees that are being removed for, for various reasons. Some of the trees being removed are too small to count as a significant tree. The other piece is that some trees are not seen as desirable species. They're invasive, perhaps, or they're dead or dying. So, in short, the landscape architect that the city has, has approved the tree removal plan. So as far as landscaping requirements go, again, kind of tough to see this at, at a distance, but you can see there are overstory trees proposed all throughout the site, in front of the, the buildings between the, the structures and the cul-de-sacs, and then behind them, providing some screening from adjacent corridors or uses. The developer has provided enough trees to satisfy the requirement for the number. But I also do want to touch on screening, and this is one area where some revisions will be required according to the city's landscape architect. So revisions are suggested to be required if the Planning Commission recommends an approval of this project. The approach for screening this use will likely need to vary based on how the city code reads, whether it be the, the west or the east parcel. So, starting with the east parcel, because of the space between the structures, and let me see if I can get the cursor to show up here. So, some of these structures and their patios are pretty close to that northern property boundary, which doesn't give a lot of space. So a combination likely of fencing and plantings, tree plantings, is, is what would allow for them to meet the city's screening requirement. Where on the west side, where we have, where we have trees being preserved, the landscape architect would like to see just additional plantings to form a vegetative screened barrier. So the approach will likely need to vary in those planner revisions. So, parkland dedication projects that are going through the subdivision process will be required to provide parkland dedication to the city, either in land or in Acashan Luffy. In this case, Acashan Luffy is what's proposed and what's suggested by staff, given the location of the site. It's near the other available public parks, and so there is no current, need identified by the comprehensive plan for, for any additional parkland in this location. Okay, I want to touch again here on some of the staff comments. So we've talked about a lot of the planning items here. The city engineers had an opportunity to review this project. There are revisions suggested, or required, rather, by the city engineer to a number of the plan pages. There is an easement issue that I, was in the city engineer's comments that I wanted to address. There is also a requirement for a sidewalk provided by this development. So I talked about the sidewalks that are on either side of the cul-de-sac streets, but this development will also be required to provide a continuous sidewalk from 39th Street all the way up to the Sunflower Lane area. There is a sidewalk that currently terminates in that area, and by, if you can see this inset on the screen here, by going north of the property boundary and connecting to where that sidewalk currently terminates, we'd be creating a more continuous pedestrian network. So seen as a desirable requirement for this project. The city's landscape architect, as I mentioned, has suggested a condition, conditional approval and for the, the screening issue. The city's fire chief has had an opportunity to review the project and has provided comments. These are relatively standard for, for similar developments. And lastly, the developer is required to go through the Valley Branch Watershed District permitting process, and is my understanding that they are currently doing that right now. So a little bit more on the easement issue that I mentioned. The engineering comment number four, part of it says, "The site plans must be revised to remove all encroachments and must be revised to eliminate any rear doorways to these units since the easements are proposed up to the physical building structure." This is something that has been discussed throughout the, the development process, and really, there's two solutions to this. One is the comment that the city engineer has provided. Another is for the city to provide or allow for an encroachment agreement within the easement that's required. And specifically, I'll, I'll reference the image on the right of the screen. That, that easement at issue is the one that's in the red boundary. There is a stormwater collection pipe that runs along that easement. So really, what this means is that if, if it's approved as is proposed, and the city ever had to do work in that area, potentially have to disrupt at least the patios for these units in order to fix or replace that stormwater pipe if, if it's needed. So, an encroachment agreement would effectively say, "Okay, developer, you can, you can make these improvements, but, you know, if this, if work ever happens here, it's at your own cost." So those are two options. I won't say that we have a solution yet. We're working through that, and we'll certainly be looking to continue working through it before it goes to the city council, but I wanted to bring that up to you this evening, if you have any recommendations. So, public comments have been received by the city for this project. To date, we've received emails from four different residents on this project. I'll pause and say, if anyone here is looking to file a public comment, there are sign-in sheets at the back of the room that you'll have to use. So those emails, I'll summarize them. They're in bullets on the screen here. We have heard concern regarding the screening, specifically between the... We have heard concern regarding the screening, specifically between this use and those residential properties to the north. And additionally, or also the, the loss of those tree plantings that are currently existing in that area. There is a concern for the impacts that construction brings. This is something that the city does try to mitigate through the development review and then the approval process. There, there are concerns for the impacts that building this project would have. Building heights is something we heard about. Traffic impacts to Wildflower Drive was mentioned by one resident. There is also a concern for the availability of water, and we'll talk about that here, and I have some information in the staff report on that for you. And lastly, there was one resident that did comment on the support or the compatibility of the land use that's proposed with some of those that are surrounding. Okay, so I just briefly wanted to talk about the water appropriations issue because I know this is something that the planning commission's asked about in the past and just wanted to kind of proactively address it to the extent that I can. So the city, in the last legislative session, the 2023 spring session, worked with the legislature and ultimately the environmental omnibus bill was passed in, in the end of the spring 23 session. What that did was increase the ability of the city to get a more permit, a higher permit for water appropriations. And really what the, what, what the issue is, is the DNR limits how much water cities can draw from the ground on an annual basis, and so that's what that permit regulates. The city has been capped by the DNR at a certain level. And that, my understanding is, is as a result of the, there is a White Bear Lake lawsuit which the DNR eventually settled, which led up to that permit allocation. And so in this last legislative session, as said, the DNR increased, or was supposed to increase under that legislation, that, that permit amount. Since that time, the DNR hasn't yet increased the permit for water appropriations for the city. But the city is working with the DNR and an administrative judge to work through getting an increase to that, that permit. So, long story short, the city still does not have a water appropriations permit that's been increased. The city, to my understanding, is currently over its water appropriations permit. And so I did want to provide language to you that is found in the city's premature subdivisions ordinance. This is something that the Lake Elmo City Council has discussed, some detail. This is language that would be best utilized during the preliminary plat process. That is the time to be denying a development if the city chooses to, and that would be based on the finding that water is not available. So that was a lot of information for me. I'm sure there's more questions for, for me on that, but that is just a little bit of information for you. So there are 12 conditions that are proposed by staff if the city is to move this project forward. These are relatively standard conditions for developments of this type. Really, one of the important things is that the developer satisfied to the extent that they are required to the comments of the city engineer, city fire chief and landscape architect. And again, these are relatively standard conditions. We can go through them if you'd like, but really what they require is that the developer get required permits that they are required to have, pay required fees, enter into development agreement with the city if they are going through the final plat process and constructing those right-of-way improvements at their own cost. So I did want to talk about the staff recommendation. So I, I mentioned the water issue. The ci, the city's legal counsel has advised the consistent treatment of developments. So what I mean by that is if the city is to use its premature subdivision ordinance to deny a subdivision based on a finding that water is not available, it has to apply that equally to all developments. So as you may know, the city is looking at a variety of other developments right now that are possible through the subdivision process. The city would need to apply that, that finding that water is not available equally to all developments. City council has not formally denied any developments yet, so at least from staff's perspective, there is not really a, a final say on this issue at the moment. And so as such, staff is still recommending an approval of this project, given that no denials have been made to date on the basis of water availability. I do want to mention that in the, in the staff report, I, I did write a possibility could be to approve the project conditional upon the resolution of the water appropriations issue. After some further discussion with staff, that doesn't appear to be a great solution for the city specifically. If the city were to approve a development contingent upon the resolution of the water issue, it could be some time before that issue is resolved. And whether it's months or even potentially years, we don't necessarily want to have a developer that has an approval that just can't get in the ground. We don't know what standards or rules might change, state or otherwise, locally in that time. So for that reason, I do not suggest that, that particular option. So that is what I have for you. On the recommendations page here, I do have a motion that would allow for the planning commission to recommend an approval if that is the decision of the planning commission. So that's all I have formally prepared. I do want to note that the applicant and their team are here and would love to speak with you about this development. So I suggest that you hear from them prior to opening the public hearing.
Nathan, I ask a couple of quick questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to confirm on your recommendation, or sorry, the the recommended conditions of approval, can you just a quick recap item 1A? We have city engineer, landscape and fire chief, what the three concerns there were?
Yeah, so this is a, a pretty standard process through the development review where when we receive an application, this is no different, we send the application to all of the, the city staff internally that review developments. In this case, the city engineer, fire chief and landscape architect provided review memos that are provided in your packet. As, as an example, the city engineer's memo is roughly three pages long with a list of various requirements should the city move this development forward. And so it's a standard condition to require the plans be corrected to the satisfaction of the city based on the recommendations of all three of those staff members.
Okay, perfect. Speaking of, I guess, I don't know if it's on the engineering one or not, that the setbacks, so we talk about, I'm looking at the rear setbacks. Our requirement is at least 10 feet, proposed is 10 plus feet. There'll be brought up two concerns with an encroachment and then landscaping on the north side. So it, I guess that seems kind of counterintuitive. We're saying there's more than enough feet, but then enough space, but then we're saying there's not.
Yeah, so it's in some cases, you know, with this type of development and even with, as an example, the what ended up being called Prairie Sky Development there. It, you know, depends on the type of development and the way that they're proposing to, to plat the property as to how we will apply the setback standards. In this case, we have one, well, we have two lots, right, with each with a number of buildings on them. In this case, the setbacks for a structure are 10 feet, and so that was the rule applied. The, the buildings had to be at least 10 feet away from the property boundary in those situations. And so the plans showed structures that were that far, but to meet other standards, things like screening and, and something like that, it might be helpful to have more space, certainly, but not required.
Okay. I'll hold my questions for now. Do we have other questions?
I do.
Commissioner Stowe?
So as of today, would you say there's adequate water supply or would you say we are waiting to see what further comes down?
Yep, Commissioner, great question. This is not a quantity issue. The, as I have been helped to understand, the, there is enough water available to the city to draw on with its various wells. The issue is, is really a administrative, or you might say a political one, which is that the city does not have the DNR appropriation permit. That doesn't have the allocation of the, of the yearly amount that it needs to be conforming.
So there is, there was a current development, the bank over by the Holiday, that is currently tabled. So that was not denied by the city council, but it was tabled because of water concerns, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner, yep.
Could, I'm guessing the answer is it could, but the same thing could happen to this. They may not deny it outright, but they could table it based on.
Commissioner, that's a great question. So the city can table a development for a period of time. As is the case with the Bridgewater Village Development and with, with others, you have a statutory period by which you're, you're required to render a decision on a project. And so that project is currently not, it's, it's getting closer, but it's not at the end of its timeline yet. There in the new year will be a planning or a city council meeting where that will be reviewed again. And a decision will be required, a final decision, an approval or denial.
So what is the timeline generally for that, for if something's tabled?
So the timeline for a project like this one is 120 days. That is the statutory review period for preliminary plat.
And, okay, alright.
So we're, we're like, if I had to guess, I don't know, I can guess for you, it's like 60 to 90, somewhere in there right now.
Thank you.
Can you go back to the encroachment issues? You talked about an encroachment agreement.
Oh, yep.
So the intent is if they encroach on the drainage line, that they sign an agreement that if access has to be given to the city back there, that they're okay doing that and they accept all the costs?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't believe we allow homeowners to do that currently with a fence. We've got a 10-foot setback from a storm drain line in your backyard and you can't put a fence within that 10 feet. We didn't choose to allow for an encroachment agreement for a homeowner to put a fence in their backyard.
I have firsthand knowledge that that, that's correct.
Seems like we're, alright, yeah.
Yeah, and, and to that point, these are for sale units, correct?
Uh, these are, to my understanding, understanding rental units.
Rental units, okay. So there, there would be some type of landlord that would be responsible. I just did wanted to make sure that if this encroachment agreement did move forward, that it's put on the homeowners association and people move in and all of a sudden, work has to be done to the storm line and now the homeowners associate, but so it would be the owner.
Commissioner, Chair and Commissioner, the way that this is being platted or proposed, these buildings are all on one property, so you're not able to sell one piece of it off. They would have to go through a city approval process to subdivide the.
Who's responsible for the sidewalk that runs up?
The developer will be responsible for the construction of that sidewalk.
Okay, who's responsible for the sidewalk?
Maintenance.
The maintenance of it?
So I talked to the.
Runs up to Sunflower Lane.
Yeah, so there is a gap, as you identified, between the northern property boundary and the, the existing sidewalk on Sunflower Lane. I've heard from the city's public works director that the portion between the northern property boundary and that current terminus, that would be maintained by the city. It's not adjacent to any property in specific, so.
I have concerns about that. Yeah.
Just a little questions?
What, um, can you give some examples of what would be in a village mixed-use development?
Yeah, so the city has, I'll go back up to the zoning map, bear with me for a moment. So you can see the village mixed-use district. That's the zoning for this property. And let's see if I can find the cursor. The property here obviously is, is circled here in this, this thick black line. But you can see this zoning district is a pretty significant part of this kind of village development area of the city's downtown. And so really the idea with this mixed-use district is to provide some flexibility. The properties that are to the north of this one are strictly residential. So the intent here is to provide flexibility, provide for an ability of property owners to transition the uses from residential to somewhat more intensive land uses to the south. This is envisioned as a kind of a downtown area, so commercial, specifically services, shops.
Has a traffic study been performed at all to look at increased vehicle and pedestrian traffic down Laverne and on 39th to Stillwater Boulevard?
A traffic study has not been required. And I can explain that a little bit more, and so, yeah, I'm happy to. So the, the city has adopted a comprehensive plan which guides the property for certain densities. This project is coming in at a pretty low density on the range that's required by the city's comprehensive plan.
Yep.
So the traffic impacts from the number of units are going to be lower. Trip generation will be slightly lower throughout the day than some other uses that might take place on the site. So the city has the infrastructure required to manage the, the, the project.
I, as, as a resident of Village Preserve who lives right there, I can tell you that the traffic at 39th and Stillwater Boulevard at 8 o'clock in the morning or 4 o'clock in the afternoon, you're not taking a left. There, there, the traffic is too great, and as I've previously noted, there is no pedestrian access across Stillwater Boulevard at all. You've said that before.
Is there, is there a question there?
What's that? No, not a question, just a statement, sorry.
No worries. We'll save statements for discussion.
Right.
Chair and Commissioner, if it's a question, the planning commission absolutely has the ability to require, not require, but recommend that a traffic study be required of the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of the village mixed-use, I know we have in mixed-use a requirement of business and residential. I can't remember the percentage off the top of my head. Does that not apply to village mixed-use?
So this district, I, I don't, I don't think that we have a specific requirement, but.
I know we do for mixed-use, because that got brought up where we required, I think it was at least 20% has to be.
Correct.
Business. I can't remember village mixed-use though.
Chair and Commissioner, my, my answer right now is no, I'll look it up while the, while you're hearing from the applicant and residents, and we can confirm that for you.
Thank you.
So one follow-up question. If, and I'm not, I'm just gonna ask, if we were to do the lack of water, adequate water supply, that recommendation, how long? Is that just, are we just saying we're essentially, we, we're not okay with this right now and it's indefinitely on? Is there a time limit on that?
So the subdivision ordinance does not speak to a timeframe, but essentially that issue would have to be resolved. So if the city denies a development for lack of water, if that's with a finding, then the city will have to apply that consistently to all new developments, all subdivisions, until such time as the water issue is resolved.
Thank you.
I found it in the code. Village mixed-use does not call out a percentage division, it's only in mixed-use.
So.
Thank you, Chair.
Let me, let me throw, you're saying all developments, so you're saying the school as well?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's be honest, so this is.
Any project that requires a subdivision, which would include, as presented, at least at this point, that, that project includes a subdivision.
Okay.
Perfect. Alright, Nathan, much appreciated. If the applicant mind coming up? And same thing, if you have my name and address for the record, please?
Uh, yes. Good evening. My name is Leanna Stefaniac. I live at 1722 Diane Road in Mendota Heights. I apologize ahead of time for my voice. I lost it about a week and a half ago, hasn't come back. It sounds a little harsher than I intend for it to sound, so I do apologize ahead of time. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. One of the reasons why I wanted to speak with you following Nathan's presentation is just to give you a little background of who At Home Apartments is. This is the first time we have appeared before the city of Lake Elmo. So just to give you a little background on us and then to address a couple of questions that I heard during Nathan's presentation and, and some of the alternative solutions we could offer as the applicant. At Home. I'm sorry. Is, is that better? Okay. So as I said, my name is Leanna Stefaniac. I am president of Real Estate and Development for At Home Apartments. I also serve as our company's general counsel. At Home Apartments is a real estate firm specializing in property management and development. We're based in St. Paul. I think one of the key distinctions about our company versus some other real estate firms that may have been before you is that we own and manage our own properties. We are not a fee management company. We don't manage properties for other people. It is only the properties that we own that we manage for. Same thing for development. We develop for our own ownership. We are not a fee-for-developer. We don't develop a property and flip it out. Which is one of the reasons why you can see that all of our buildings are located on one parcel. That is because we intend to own and operate for 30, 40, 50 years. Our company was started almost 30, 33 years ago, actually. It started as a small company. We owned our first 20-unit building and through our own maintenance and leasing and hard work, we kind of grew the company over the last 30 years to where we are today. We own and manage about 5,000 units throughout the Twin Cities metro with a small portfolio in St. Paul and also in Kansas City. We've developed in communities such as. Kansas City. Um, we've developed in communities such as White Bear Lake, Badness Heights, Mendota Heights, Eagan, Minnetonka, um, et cetera. Um, one of the reasons or one of the things we look for when we're looking to develop in a new community, um, is a vibrancy of the community, dedication to strong schools, dedication to public safety, infrastructure, et cetera. Um, there's five people on our development team of our company of a hundred and ten. And the five people, one of our main conditions for, um, even looking at developing a project is a member of our family wants to have to live in this community. It's important to us that what we're bringing to a community, what we're bringing to the residents, is good enough for our own family. If it's not, then we're not going to move forward with, with an application or a development project. Um, and all of the attributes that I just described are found within Lake Elmo. Lake Elmo is a very strong community. Um, it would be, it's a community that we want to be a part in and, and do so for a long period of time. As I said, we don't flip out. We intend to be, um, good neighbors and stakeholders within this community should our project be approved. Um, as Nathan said, um, our project is forty-eight, uh, rental town home units. These are luxury rental twin home and town home units. Um, they are meant to provide a little bit of housing variety for Lake Elmo. Uh, one of the goals that you have listed in your twenty forty comp plan is a variety of housing that allows life cycle housing. And what we're proposing does do that. By having twin homes and town homes as a transition between your single-family homes to the north and northwest next to commercial allows for that vibrancy and life cycle housing to happen within an area that's designated in your comp plan to allow that mix between commercial and, and housing. Um, one of the other components that it does do, um, it helps turn over existing housing stock as well. Um, many communities are finding some of their population is aging out of their existing homes, but they don't want to leave the community that they, they've grown up in, where they go to church in, where they see their friends for coffee. So providing a housing opportunity like this that provides main, uh, maintenance-free living, um, concierge-type living with, you know, dedicated property management company like ourselves, it allows that family to right-size, if you will. Move out of the larger home, move into a smaller home, staying in the community, and then it frees up the larger home for a new family to come in, maybe a larger family, a family with young kids. They can move into that existing housing stock, maintaining it and preserving it. And then we provided a new opportunity for another member of the community. Um, so that's really our goal and vision for why we wanted to, uh, bring this project forward to you. Um, some of the other things, real quickly, if I may, um, you know, one of the questions that came up was about the easement, specifically bill, uh, units thirteen to eighteen on the east parcel that aligns with the commercial property. Um, there is the encroachment issue. We have two solutions. It could be the encroachment agreement that was discussed, but I hear your comments that that's not something that is offered to other folks, that, you know, we need to be consistent with that. Um, so another option we could do, rather than just doing the concrete slab patio, um, we can switch that for those five units there and redesign the area. So do it in pavers that can be easily removed. And, and we can shrink it a little bit, but then it's not this concrete slab that's, you know, right up to that line. So we're willing to have some design, um, flexibility there. We've used the pavers in other properties, um, and therefore it's not disturbing anything. If it's too close to the encroachment area, it could be three or four pavers deep rather than six. So we have some flexibility there should you, um, it be decided that the encroachment agreement that was previously, previously discussed with staff isn't the best use, we can be flexible with that. Um, regarding the, um, the screening area and the concerns with the tree line, um, specifically the north property line on the east parcel, um, we understand that the city code does require right now, um, a transition between land uses or, excuse me, housing uses, so single-family into the multifamily that we're discussing. Um, a six-foot, ninety percent opaque fence is a current requirement under the screening ordinance. Um, we had asked for some flexibility from that because we do think vegetative screening, um, it's more, um, in harmony with the existing neighborhoods. It provides just a visual aesthetic that just looks better and doesn't create this institutional wall between houses. Rather, it just provides like a different feel and a part, uh, continues the feeling of neighborhood. Um, but we understand that with some of the tree removal that we do have to do, um, that is a concern specifically for the neighbors who are going to be directly facing that. So we're willing to continue to be collaborative on this piece, whether it's, um, you know, more trees as we can. If we can move the buildings down a little bit, we might have to adjust the road sizing there. Um, we'd have to talk to the city engineer on that. Or we could do segmented fencing, meaning like sections of fencing with greenier, greenery in between, you know, trees, um, bushes, what have you, rather than just like an institutional wall, because we want to offer the screening, but I don't know if that long fence really does something for the neighborhood in that way. So again, um, you know, we're open to feedback. We've talked to the city's landscape architect several times on this piece. Um, so whatever we can do can, to continue to be collaborative on that piece, we're open to doing that. Um, I have any question, if you have any questions for me, um, I can answer them now or I can wait until the public hearing piece is open.
Any questions?
Yes, what flexibility would you have, uh, looking at the east block versus the west block that backs up to the neighborhoods? The east side, you've got duplexes or twin homes that duplexes, and then we've got a fourplex. So there's pretty, some pretty intensive massing on the west side that backs up to those houses. Yeah, you've got more spacing and a screen, but is there any opportunity to look at splitting those then do it?
Are you referring to, um, on block one, right by, right above where it says Street B? Are you talking about that massing?
Yes, yep.
Um, we did look at that. Um, we could revisit that again, um, but due to some of the setback requirements, that building ended up being wider versus separating them. If we separate them, then we have to, you know, we have to have ten feet, twenty feet between the two buildings and it starts to not really work with the road construction. Um, we can certainly revisit that again. I do have our architect with me tonight.
Okay.
He could, he could field that question in more detail for you. But you can see that if you actually look at that particular building and compare to the other ones, it's not as deep, it's wider.
Yeah.
Um, for part of those reasons that I just explained.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Perfect. Alright.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Alright, commissioners, this is a public hearing. Uh, we will need to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
One second. Motion by Commissioner Stiles, second by Commissioner Ray Camp to open the public hearing. Excuse me. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is open at seven fifty-six P M. Uh, so as a reminder for those that I've got, it looks like three, three, uh, individuals here looking to speak, I'll just call the first one up. Uh, just as a reminder for how public hearings function, uh, it's your opportunity to be able to speak your mind. It's not a Q and A, so we don't go back and forth with questions to commissioner or city staff or applicant. Uh, you'll have up to six minutes to be able to speak. I'll give you a little one-minute countdown, just to give you a heads up that time's almost there, uh, and then ask you to wrap it up there at six minutes. Uh, so the first name I have here is a Don Place. And if you don't mind as well, when you get to the mic, uh, name and address again.
Yeah, I'm Don Place. I live at four zero one zero Monarch Lane. Um, and I'm on the board of the homeowners association for Wildflower, so I represent them. Also represent the houses that live along Sunflower. If you're looking at the map, the, the street immediately, uh, north of the eastern portion of the development. My house is the one in the furthest northeast. Actually, I border on Sunflower, even though my address is Wa- uh, Monarch Lane. And, um, before I make my comments, uh, I'd like to thank Leanna Stefaniac. She has reached out and, uh, to talk to those residents in Wildflower that live right along Sunflower Lane, uh, across from their proposed development. And, uh, we've had some great conversations. Some of her comments tonight on trees, or I could hear, were related to our conversations. And, uh, she's been very responsive and I think, uh, if this project goes through, uh, At Home Apartments will be a great neighbor. Now, that doesn't mean we don't have some issues, because we do, and I'd like to get into those. Um, the, the barrier issue, um, we have, if you were to drive down, uh, Sunflower Lane, you know, a lot, there's a lot of, lot of trees. Some of them are garbage trees, some of them are sick, but we've got a lot of very established trees. Number of conifers, uh, a number of large diameter deciduous trees, all of which will be removed under this plan, except for possibly two or three in the very northeast corner where that, uh, that quad unit is at an angle. Everything else will be gone. And the reason, you know, it actually makes sense, uh, there's no space in between the back of those duplexes that, uh, reach out to, um, to Sunflower Lane. I, I, my understanding is that there's a twenty-five foot distance from the curb on Sunflower Lane to the property line. And then these go right up within ten feet of the property line, the, the duplexes. So there's no space for trees, uh, for any natural barrier. So in our conversations, we've been talking about what can we do with that limited space? There's so little. Uh, we've got the choice, maybe of a fence, like I guess, uh, ordinance suggests. Uh, the good news in the fence is it, it provides a little barrier. We think these buildings are so close, it would be very easy for visitors who are more than the four cars that are allowed to be parked at these places, uh, would park on, uh, Sunflower Lane and just kind of walk the thirty feet through no trees, because there won't be any trees, uh, to, uh, uh, one of those houses. The fence would provide some security that way. We'd like that. But on the other hand, and I think, uh, Leanna used the word institutional look, we're not really fond of the look of the fence. We'd like to have a natural barrier. But there's no room for substantial trees, and it won't be in our lifetime that those, whatever is planted is going to be substantial enough. So we're really in a no-win situation here with the proximity, very close proximity of these duplexes to, uh, to Sunflower Lane. So we have a request, and maybe this is more to engineering than, uh, to, uh, to At Home Apartments, and Leanna actually, Leanna actually mentioned this too, is that can these buildings be moved down towards the south a bit to allow some room for, uh, for trees? My understanding is that one of the reasons they're so close to, uh, Sunflower Lane is because the city has demanded a thirty-two foot wide street. Apparently the original application requested twenty-eight foot width. City says, no, you gotta have thirty-two. I, I, I went out and measured our streets. Sunflower Lane, right along, would be paralleling this, is twenty-two and a half feet wide. Monarch Lane, slightly larger, uh, uh, street, which just runs north from the northeast corner of this, is twenty-eight feet wide. And the alleys and pathways and hours are eighteen foot wide. Why you'd need to have thirty-two feet for, for this, you know, uh, development is, is a bit of a mystery. And my understanding, would need to be confirmed, is if it brought it back down to twenty-eight, might be able to get a little shift and building south and provide a little more room for some trees and natural barrier, which I think most of us, uh, who live along Sunflower Lane would appreciate. Another, uh, issue we have, we love the idea that there's going to be a new six-foot concrete sidewalk running north-south on Wildflower Drive. Um, one of the reasons we like it is it's concrete and not batuminous, which there is a sidewalk on the other side of the street. A sidewalk which never gets plowed in the winter. When we, when we walk downtown, and we do that a lot, I go to the post office and the library and walk a lot. In the winter, we have to walk down the street. And we need to have the city plow this concrete, uh, sidewalk. And, uh, that's would be a first, but we'd like to have that happen. Please help us make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don, appreciate it. Uh, next name I have, uh, David. And same, David, if you don't mind, just, uh, full name and address, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity. Uh, David Boorman, one one zero seven zero Thirty-Ninth Street North, apartment three one nine. The Fields apartment right across the road here from Thirty-Ninth. Um, my concern is water, but it's not drinkable water, it's surface water. And I did not see any mention in the documentation or anything about what this plat is going to do with the surface water. And, uh, if you look at the rest of the block, the Fields has a large pond where all the surface water drains into as required by the Valley Branch watershed. So to me, this is a missing link in this. There's a lot of impervious, uh, surface area here with the street and all these buildings. So I'd like to see that addressed. Maybe some ponding or whatever for the surface water. We don't want it moving into the pond area, right adjacent at the Fields. There are three ponds at the Fields. You look at Arbor Glen, they have a very large surface water drain field. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Uh, next I've got, uh, Brian S. Thorensen. If you know the drill, name and address, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Brian Thorensen, and I live at four zero three two Swallow Tail Lane in the Wildflower subdivision. I'd like to thank the Lake Elmo, uh, city commissioners for, uh, inviting us, uh, to this meeting and giving us the ability to address some concerns. Although I understand the need to encourage growth and development for the Lake Elmo community, we also believe that the overall aesthetics of the existing neighborhoods need to be upheld and that the safety of the community must be preserved. To that end, I have the following comments. I think, uh, Commissioner, um, Pen Camp, uh, mentioned a concern about traffic, which I share. Uh, I've lived in the Wildflower subdivision now for two years, and I've just seen a com- an increase and an increase in traffic on Thirty-Ninth Street. And some of it is due to development, but some of it is due to changing, uh, commuter habits. Uh, if you've ever driven down Highway Thirty-Six during rush hour, you'll see backups almost all the way to six ninety-four coming into Stillwater. You see the same thing from time to time on Stillwater Boulevard. And what's happening is a lot of people, when you look at Stillwater Boulevard, the speed limit is fifty-five miles an hour from Manning Road, past the cemetery, right to the Lake Elmo Bank. And then it drops to fifty, and then right over by, just a, a little bit to the, uh, um, west of Laverne, it drops to forty. Uh, that speed is, is way too high because most people are driving well in excess of fifty-five. And I think I could attest to that by talking to the sheriff's department, who consistently is setting out there, I think handing out tickets. So one of the concerns that I have is I think we need a three, at a minimum, a three-way stop sign at the corner of Thirty-Ninth Street and Stillwater Boulevard, which is where the Lake Elmo Bank is. Uh, traffic lights would be preferred, but a three-way stop sign, and I think before that would happen, I think the speed limit should be reduced to forty miles an hour to be consistent with the rest of the downtown Lake Elmo area. Uh, maybe fifteen, twenty years ago, fifty-five miles an hour was okay, but as the density increases, that's a safety hazard. And as you pointed out, there's no pedestrian crosswalks there. There's no way for people on bicycles or walkers to, to move across Stillwater Boulevard in a safe manner. The, uh, the threshold that I understand for, uh, uh, construction to trigger a traffic, uh, study, it's, it's not that there's forty-eight units here that's going to cause a problem, but it's the aggregation of all of these developments. Uh, Wildflower has been, has been building out. Uh, we have Prairie Skies, which is, which is coming out. We've had the Legacy and North Star over on the west side of Lake Elmo Boulevard at the intersection of Thirty-Ninth, which is building out. Uh, we've had the volleyball court put in, uh, next to the fire station, which is creating a tremendous amount of traffic congestion when they have events. I'm almost, you know, concerned, how is our fire, uh, department going to get out of this building with no traffic controls on the li- on the, on the, on the street? So I would like to encourage the, uh, city commissioners to ask for a traffic volume study to be done. I think by working with Washington County and working with Minnesota, uh, D N, or the, uh, Minnesota Department of Transportation, that's not a, uh, a request that I think is out of line. I think it should be looked at. And as I say, it's not just each of these subdivisions and developments, it's the aggregate. You know, it's forty-eight here, it's fifty there, it's, uh, two hundred in this development. Uh, and then it's the commuters. So, uh, I would appreciate, uh, if, if, if that could be addressed. So I would appreciate if that could be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, friend. Next one, I have Tom Ingstrom.
Tom Ingstrom, I work with Robert Ingstrom Companies, excuse me, developer of Wildflower and Lake Elmo, 4801 West 81st Street, Minneapolis. Just a couple of things, and it's been said, but I wanted to thank Leanna and At Home for their spirit of trying to find good solutions. So I trust that will continue and be good for everybody. So thank you. And then a couple of people before me stole my thunder, but obviously, we're really concerned about the tree preservation line and just making it look nice between the developments. And I think one simple thing that could help is the wide 32-foot street can be narrowed, and by doing that, you can create more room in the back, which just gives more flexibility. I don't know how it will all turn out, but it gives more flexibility to having tree preservation and better landscaping. So that's just my comments.
Thank you, Tom.
I have my name now for number five, but could I speak to this one, please, in public hearing?
To the current, the At Homes one?
You have my name going up there for number five.
Yeah. Sorry, you want to speak on this one?
Yeah, that's fine, Susan.
And that was also the last paper. Was there anybody else that I missed? I know we have some for the next item. Just want to make sure we don't have any. And Susan, you know the...
Good evening. Susan Dunn, 11018 Upper 33rd Street North. I hope everybody can hear me.
Loud and clear.
I really appreciate the opportunity to come up tonight and to speak to your people and my wonderful commissioners and staff, of course. I want to reiterate the concern about the trees. That's a real big one. Lake Elmo's slowly been deforested. If you ever went down to Tartan Park and saw what happened there, the only thing that saved it, folks, was a DNR saying you couldn't clearcut 1,000 feet from the water. So I'm glad we were able to save at least part of that one. And I would like to reiterate, I do think there was a need a traffic study, and I was very, very glad to hear that. And also, Valley Branch Watershed. Last week, I was at their meeting, and they were talking about the issues and concerns they have in our watershed district. And I don't know if it's been published and out to you folks yet, but I think it's really important to see that, especially in, we're talking about these high-density developments and the impervious surface. Once again, this is only, these are 48 units, I believe. I don't know how many bedrooms per unit, but that's something that probably might have been in your packet. I didn't get the packet, so I don't know. And I believe there was another, I think it was townhouse or apartments that were approved just kind of across from the bank. So cumulatively, how much traffic would that be putting on the streets? Like I said, these are, some of the phases have been changed in the Lake Elmo in the planning and the, on the comp plan. And I think maybe that's kind of adding to some of the concern that people have about the high density and the quick, the fast amount of construction and traffic that we're getting. But anyhow, I just wanted to kind of touch base on that and reinforce what some of these other people said, because it really is important. And you have to think of the total area, not just one little spot, and try to save as much as you can. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. All right, perfect. And again, last call, just to make sure I didn't miss anybody else in the audience. Okay. Commissioners, we'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Breeze, second by Commissioner Bullock, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is now closed at 8:14 And then there is a motion in our packet that we can entertain, allow for discussion. Do you mind? Oh, you're on it. Thank you, Nathan. Sorry, I'm pulling my packet back up.
Chair and Commissioners, that same motion should be on the screen here for you now.
Perfect. I'll go and start it here. Motion to recommend approval of the preliminary PUD plan and preliminary plat as requested by At Home Apartments for the subject property based on the findings, effect, and the recommended conditions of approval listed in the staff reports. Motion by Commissioner Reiser, second by Commissioner Stile, to recommend approval.
Would you like to start with discussion?
There are a lot of issues that need to be worked out, but that is what happens with preliminary PUDs. Seen many of these before, and there are issues, and I do believe that we can work through most of these. So this, I mean, at this point, I would, I am okay with moving forward to see that some of these can work through the process. The issues that I think have been raised tonight, I think, are things that can be solved throughout the staff planning. It's not a reason in my mind tonight to say no.
Yeah, I think the comments and stuff made by everybody that we've heard through in kind of our own questions, when you take this in isolation, it, as our role dictates, it meets the requirements for approval. I think there's some big things that the city council needs to start taking into consideration, as we've heard here tonight, is looking at the broader picture. We can't keep piecemealing individual projects. Again, based off of what we are here to do tonight, at an individual-specific basis, this, yes, there's work that needs to be needed. It does sound like At Home Apartments is trying to be a good neighbor. That seems to be resonating through the, through the public, which is great to see. A lot of times, we don't see that much communication back and forth. So being able to find a working solution seems plausible. But again, the, for the council members that are listening at home for this, I think we have to start taking a serious look at the traffic for sure. Understanding that some of these are county roads, we don't have much we can do on those. And then I think we also need more consistent guidance on where council sees the water situation as well. Can't be done in isolation either.
I agree with that. The research that I have seen at the At Home Apartments looks very impressive. Some of the issues that were brought up in our packet, I noticed that they responded to. Even this evening, it seems like they're willing to work with us, which is fabulous. But I'm still trying to wrap my head around the water issue, because this is just the beginning. We have more subdivisions coming down the pike in our next few meetings, and the DNR has not increased our water appropriations yet. And by saying, they're great, which they are, go for it, you're still not addressing that issue. And the next time, our next meeting, the next subdivision that comes up, we're still not addressing that issue yet. I, if I'm not mistaken, and I could be, by saying, hang on, let's not do this yet, allows them a chance then, if the DNR comes through with water, then they can come back to us. Correct?
Yeah, Chair and Commissioner. So if the question is, you know, what do we do if we don't have our appropriations number now? You know, it's within the city's ability to deny development, as I said, based on a lack of water. It would have to, obviously, again, treat those developments in the period between now and the resolution of this issue with the same. But the, you know, if, you know, a flip switched and tomorrow, we denied it today, and tomorrow we had some new circumstances and the appropriations issue is resolved, the developer could reapply with, you know, provided that the zoning and subdivision requirements were the same, they could reapply and it would be the same review and recommendation.
So I, within that, and that's why I brought the school up before, if we call this premature, then we're, we've killed the school, I think. Or there's a good chance that we will lose Lake Elmo Elementary.
Yeah, it sounds to me like if you deny this, you've got to deny anything, or you're opening yourself up to legal action.
Right. Great place.
I'm not, I'm not prepared to go, that needs to come from council. If that's all we want to...
Well, I think, I think it does, because at the end of the day, all we recommend to council.
Correct. And I'm not, I'm not tonight prepared to go that way.
I think there are, the larger issues, the aggregate issues, water, street road capacities, what are the options for them to reduce to 28 feet from 32 for road?
So the city has an engineering design standards manual, and that is what the city engineer is reviewing all developments against. And that is the manual that has the 32-foot requirement within it. So I can't speak to the criteria through which the city engineer will review that request to reduce the right-of-way width, but that is potentially another element of the PUD that could be approved by the city. That would be flexibility to that standard for road width.
Because that sounds like that solves a lot of issues, and 32 feet for, as long as these roads are, seem, it's almost as wide as it is long.
Yeah, so, yeah, unfortunately, Commissioner, just to say, add on to that, I don't have the ability to speak for the city engineer as to why that standard should be upheld. So, yeah, that's kind of the information we have now.
A clarifying question, I think David was the one who brought this up. There, Outlet A is going to be the storm water collector there for both blocks, Block 1 and Block 2, correct? So it's basically going to get fed over into Outlet A?
Yep. Chair, you're right. Yep, so the, there will be catch basins in the cul-de-sac on the west parcel. Those would feed into a storm sewer line. That storm sewer would run underneath Wildflower Drive and kind of lead into that Outlet A, storm water pond. That pond is sized to appropriately manage to the degree, you know, to like the 100-year storm amount that they're required to. It will manage and treat the storm water on this site. So in other words, the sediments and the nutrients will be taken out of the water from that pond in addition to like volume control, so not putting water onto adjacent properties.
Okay. Thank you. Any other points of discussion, or...
I'm encouraged by the applicant wanting to own and maintain this for a long period of time. It's not a development flip, it's an investment for them, and I appreciated the words of being part of the community. I think this is an appropriate use for this property. You're transitioning from low-density housing to median-density housing to commercial. It's a lot better than a warehouse. I would like, I'm very pro fence, however, I'm also very pro what residents want to see. So I appreciate that the applicant has met with residents of the adjoining properties and discussed this. It may not be everybody's preference to not have a fence or to have more foliage, but I appreciate that that's being worked on. The water issue is the huge one, I think we've touched on that plenty, is that, you know, at some point, council needs to make the decision that no more, or, you know, we get appropriations. I know it's, sounds like our appropriations are in the works, but it has not happened yet. And then I'm discouraged by the encroachment easement. I do appreciate that the applicant has said, you know, we can work on that. And I think that if, you know, the city engineer could agree to narrowing the streets a little bit, providing a little more room in the back of the property between the resident neighbors, I think that'd be a good thing, so. And traffic study, because I want Tom to get across Stillwater Boulevard.
Thank you.
Everybody else.
It's about my kids, it's not about me.
Yeah, right.
One additional question that was brought up, kind of related to the overall safety concerns and stuff, just thinking broader too with some of these other subdivisions, are there streetlights anywhere that are being added to this development?
That's a good question, Chair. There are two streetlights that would be proposed. They would be, first one, I'll get the cursor to show up here, so I'm looking at the west property, the streetlight. You can see the cursor kind of hovering over that little black dot, that is where a streetlight would be. And then on the other cul-de-sac to the east, sort of towards the south of the site. So there would be a couple of streetlights with this project.
Is there also one there at the turn-in there at Street A?
That is, that is correct. Yep, right at the intersection, that is a good point.
Okay. Thank you.
And to clarify, the city is going to claim responsibility for that north-south sidewalk all the way from 39th to Sunflower Lane?
My understanding, based on communication from the Public Works Director, is that is the case. The city would manage the sidewalk in that gap area.
Noted.
Get it in a minute.
Acknowledged.
Do you have any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I appreciate the applicant taking the initiative, working with the community. We don't always see that, I love to see that. I also love the fact that there's people here to speak to it, sharing your feedback. I appreciate that, we need that. So thanks for coming. It looks to me like the city, for the most part, is being appeased quite nicely through all their recommendations, policies, such. I would like to make sure that the concerns of the residents are met. It sounds to me like more of the issue here with some of these issues like traffic and, you know, the trees and such are actually something that the city needs to deal with, not necessarily the developer, preventing the developer from doing what the residents want. So I want to, I want to see that stuff taken care of before any more of this developing goes forward. So I'd like to see it get worked out with the city and then come back here personally. Nothing against the applicant, I think it's a city problem.
All right, again, we do have a motion on the table recommending approval. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing then, none will move to vote. All those in favor of recommending approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is that three ayes? So the motion does not pass. Do we need to provide? Trying to remember the findings effect.
Oops, sorry. Chair and Commissioners, I meant to jump in. So you have a couple of options if a motion cannot be made to move recommendation forward. You can, we're at a point in the period where we have some additional time for review, so it's possible that this project could come back to the Planning Commission in January. Probably not to the developer's preference, but that is an option that the, that you have based on where we're at now in the review period. So there's time. So that's probably option number one. Option two is this doesn't receive a recommendation, which probably is not very preferable. So it's kind of where we're at now, because the city will be, as I said, required to provide a decision on the project with or without a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
And so for the first, it's basically a table?
Yeah. Yep.
On that, if we vote for a table, can the city council overrule that?
The city council, yeah, I believe it would be within their authority, but I have not seen them do that before on a case where you have the time and the Planning Commission is looking to revisit the item.
Third would be a alternate recommendation.
Another recommendation, correct, Chair.
For that, I guess, is there any recommended motion that doesn't, in the dissent, would wish?
Chair, sorry. One last interruption from me, I apologize. The applicant, if you have questions for them about the project, if you need consultation with them to help inform the decision that you'd like to make moving forward, I'd also recommend that you have that opportunity to speak with them tonight.
We can pull back up. Would you like to continue discussion with applicant?
I'd like to ask her a couple of questions.
Okay.
If that's all right, everybody's got time. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
I guess the two biggest concerns that I'm seeing are going to be the, the trees. So what do you need from the city to get a little bit more of a barrier there that we are hearing about?
So if I may, we would be open to tabling and having the discussion with the city engineers specifically about the street widths. If we were able to get some flexibility, which the PUD does allow for, that's kind of the beauty of the PUD, kind of a pain of a PUD at the same time, but in this case, we'll call it a beauty. It allows for some flexibility from city standards. If we could have a 28-width street rather than 32, that could allow us, and my engineer is here tonight too, and we've discussed this internally, which was what our original plan was, it does allow us to shift those buildings... It does allow us to shift those buildings on the north property line of the east parcel down. And it can give us an extra, you know, save us some six, maybe more feet, I, you know, depending on how easement areas and setbacks, all the math works, that would give us some more space to hopefully preserve more trees. You know, of the tree line that seems to be most concerned, there are thirteen significant trees by the, by the city's ordinance classification. The rest are nuisance trees, but we can look at different ways to save those significant trees. Another option is if one or two of those significant trees still cannot be saved, rather than meeting the current city standard of replanting with a six-foot tree, we can bring in larger trees that by themselves would have a larger base or larger bulb, which the root system is more developed and so those trees actually grow faster. So to the comment that Mr. Place had about, you know, the height of the trees during their lifetime, you know, these trees can grow faster when they're a larger, already coming in. And so, you know, the, the growth within a five-year period is actually quite significant versus, for a ten-foot tree versus a six-foot tree that would normally be planted. So we're willing to look at that. We've been quoting out the larger trees already to see if that's something feasible. So that's a long answer to say a less wide street does allow us to, you know, to seriously consider all those options.
Twenty-eight feet solves a lot of problems.
I, I do think that it does. I think it involves some of the encroachment issues as well, particularly through units thirteen and eighteen that we described are discussed along the commercial line on that east parcel. So if that's flexibility that we could work through, I think that does not, it doesn't address the traffic, which I, you know, we can continue to talk about, but it does address the other main concerns.
Thank you.
Just one more questions for the applicant?
So if you're willing to table, we can work on that and come back before you. I don't know how procedurally we work with that since there was a vote, but I'll let you do that.
We can still entertain an additional motion to table, correct? Yeah. Going off for that up?
Well.
Or?
I'd like to bounce it off other commissioners if I might. I know the city has an interest in getting these developments in as fast as possible. And I know that if we amend the motion and send it up to council, that they'll likely just overrule the amendment and send it through. So I think we should table it and force the dialogue. I'd like to see a traffic study done regardless, it has absolutely nothing to do with the applicant, but it needs to happen, everybody in the room knows it. And I'd also, I think that the applicant is more than capable of working it out with the engineer, with the street. And I think that solves a lot of, if not all the problems, so.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to make the motion, then we can add additional discussion if needed.
Motion to table the PUD. Pull it back up so we have it as well. It's coming.
So the motion is to recommend tabling the preliminary PUD plan and preliminary plat as requested by Home Apartments?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner, every second by Commissioner Ray Camp to table. Sorry, to table, seems too short. Additional discussion? I think most was said there. Appreciate the, again, the applicant willingness and openness in this discussion and it's a process. And appreciate everybody sticking through the process. All those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, the item is currently tabled. And then I'm assuming Nathan, Sophia, you'll work with the applicant on next steps?
Yeah, so at this point in time, my, my plan would be to have this item come back in January. In the time period between now and then, we should have some ability to work with the applicant to work through some of those, you know, items that were conversation points tonight.
Okay.
Awesome.
Perfect.
Thank you, Nathan.
Alrighty, that concludes item four B. For anybody who would like to, you're more than welcome to head out. We'll give just a moment or so to let the room clear before we move to the next item. But if you want to see, stay and see government in action. We're here.
We got somebody in the front row sticking around. Watching dad.
Making faces. Hard to hear from there. Good. Thank you. So we're just giving the room another minute here to clear out. All right, as the room finishes clearing out there, we are now moving into item four C. This is our third public hearing this evening, zoning text amendment. Again, we'll go back to Sophia to hear from city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant for tonight's zoning text amendment is NYPD Landscape Supply. The property is located at ninety-five ninety-one Sixtieth Street on roughly twenty-three point eight acres. The property is currently zoned agriculture and it is guided rural area development in the comp plan. The applicants are requesting to amend city code to include yard waste recycling and landscape supply wholesale to the agricultural zoning district. If this request is approved, they would then come forward to amend their current conditional use permit. At that time, the city could add conditions, since it is a conditional use permit. As part of this amendment, staff is also recommending adding definitions to each of these proposed uses. So the first aspect of this amendment, again, is to add these two uses to table nine dash one. The first one is landscape supply wholesale. City staff did review the agricultural zoning district definition and the definition of RAD in the comp plan. In addition to looking at how other cities view this use, this is a pretty unique use within the city. Many cities and even the city of Lake Emo define garden supply centers, but that is different than what NYPD is. And then the second request is yard waste recycling, again, as a conditional use. Again, city reviewed definitions, and we looked at Forest Lake and Hugo, which both allow this use in their agricultural zoning districts. Again, both of these uses would be conditional, so if a person wants to do this use on their site, they would need to apply for a conditional use permit and come forward to planning commission and city council for review. The second aspect of this request is to add definitions. Adding definitions would be consistent with the other uses in city code. The first definition, landscape supply wholesale, again, many other cities don't have this exact use defined. But we do have garden center and we can use NYPD's use to guide the definition. So the definition of landscape supply wholesale as proposed reads as follows. An establishment that sells landscape-related materials for commercial, residential, or agricultural purposes. This use may feature an open sales lot, which allows for the display of sale of bulk items such as soil, mulch, compost, stone, rock, shrubs, trees, and items of the like. This use can be made compatible with surrounding areas through landscape screening and through separation required by yard and height, garden height limitations. So the second use is yard waste recycling. This definition was created through using Forest Lake and Hugo's definitions. We, we hodgepodge those together to create the following. Yard waste recycling means a designated area where organic waste materials such as leaves, grass clippings, branches, brush, tree stumps, tree waste, and the like are collected, processed, and managed on a large scale. This facility may include composting operations and storage of areas, storage areas for segregated waste materials. This use can be made compatible through surrounding, with surrounding areas through landscape screening and through separation required by yard and height limitations. You'll notice both of these definitions have the same last sentence. This is a standard statement in other definitions of, of city code. Then the findings. In order to approve the zoning text amendment, the city must find that the proposed uses are consistent with the agricultural zoning district and the proposed uses are consistent with the future land use definition and city's comprehensive plan. Generally, staff finds the request consistent with both the zoning district and comprehensive plan guidance. Then again, a public hearing was published in the local paper on December first and sent to surrounding property owners on November twenty-ninth. Staff has not received any public comment at this time, but I do believe we have people here to speak tonight. And with that, I can stand for any questions, we also do have the applicant here.
Questions for Suzev?
Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant wish to come up and speak?
Good evening, Chairman, my name is Joe Valdez, I'm the owner of NYPD Landscape Supply, the address ninety-five ninety-one Sixtieth Street North, Lake Emo. Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Joe Valdez, I'm the owner of NYPD Landscape Supply, as the address is ninety-five ninety-one Sixtieth Street North, Lake Emo. And to answer all the questions that you guys have.
Any questions for the applicant?
What is the motivation for requesting this change? Are you planning, opening a new part of your operation for, you know, landscape, or the, the, the organic material recycling? Can you give us a little background?
I'm actually come from Cuba twenty-three years ago and come into the land opportunities and I grow the business over here. I'm coming from St. Paul Park and I do a landscape for twenty-one years. Most of my issues and when I open my business is to be able to provide a place to dump the leaf and be able to recycle it and waste it. Like most of the places do it, it's basically your waste, your leave and stuff like that. What I created with NYPD is we actually, everything that we recycle, we actually treat it, grow it for a couple of years, process it, and we work with the UFM, we use the manure for UFM. We mix it with the compost and we actually resell it back again to the, to the public. We have a very, a lot of compliments for the people. See, you look around here, there's no place in the whole East Metro area that you'll be able to dump it. Party of town use my yard for dumping, it's the largest landscape supply. Grasses, trees, site one, they don't have a yard disposal either, they're basically haul it, everything out of there because they don't have it. Nobody recycle around here. See, anybody want to do any development here, you want to get any special soil for DOT, you gotta go all the way to, two and a half hours in here to get the dirt, the DOT required to have a special dirt mix. We actually have the machine that we can mix that kind of dirt. Right now, we, we provide that to developers, like let's say if you're gonna build a rain garden, it's eighty-five fifteen, it's basically eighty-five percent sand, fifteen percent of compost. We be able to produce this in here. We work with the City of Park High, they're dumping in my facilities right now because they don't have anywhere around here to dump. The City Lake Emo dump, and I facilitate actually buy my dirt from my, from ours too, so.
So is the yard waste recycling open to the public? So if.
Yes.
I could bring my stuff, I could bring my leaves there when I have them in ten years.
Yes, the reason we don't have a sign on it is because we don't have a permit to do that. This is why we have to keep it.
Easy, Tom, you're gonna go.
No, actually.
I got my places.
So the question is, yes, I have a lawn service. We used to picked up three hundred to four hundred loads of leaf every year and we dump it because we don't have any way to recycle it.
If you get the permit, I could bring my leaves and dump them there. Is there a fee for that, or is that?
It's like six dollars a yard, so basically a full truck, you probably pay like twelve dollars a yard.
All right.
Twelve dollars for the dumping fee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will need a motion to open.
Motion open a public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reese, second by Commissioner Ray Camp to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is now open at eight forty-four PM. I've got two, yes, two here, John? Same rules apply, I'll give you the one minute if you, if you take all six, and if you don't mind, just name and address.
Okay, John Bourbon, I live at ninety-six twelve fifty-seven Street North. And it's just south from the NYPD landscaping business. So a couple of things. The applicant admitted to not properly or illegally running a recycling operation on their site. And we hear it, we hear the tub grinder running all the time. And we smell it. So when you look at this property, and in general, the, the language adding to the ordinance, I don't have a problem with it, but you gotta consider location. Because, you know, you can, you can screen for visual, but you can't screen easily for sound or odor. And, you know, you're, when you're, when you're recycling materials, you're gonna have decomposition and it's gonna stink. And it does stink. And so in the summertime, when you want your windows open and you get the breeze coming in, you know, what is that gonna do to your property values? That's a real concern for us in the neighborhood. So in general, I'm okay with, with the language, except if there can be, I know you said that the last sentence is the generic language that's used, but for something like yard waste recycling, I think you have to put in something that looks at proximity to residential areas that are adjacent, because this odor is gonna travel for quite a, quite a distance. So I, and the statement that was made in narrative that they want to be neighborly and work in harmony with the residential, with their neighbors, I haven't seen anybody from NYPD come by to introduce themselves, to say what they're planning to do with the business. So I don't, I don't know where that came from. We have other neighbors here, I don't know if they've seen them. So it's, it's, it's a little bit of a, I don't know, the motivation for putting that in there, but I haven't seen it personally. So I'm, I'm against NYPD having that type of business running when it's not even permitted yet. And it should be, in my opinion, shut down until there's a decision on whether or not they can have it there. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next I have, is it Ricardo?
Rick Igersdorf, ninety-nine sixty, fifty-seven Street North. I live about sixteen hundred and eighty-five feet away from this property. And quite frankly, I can hear that grinder running quite frequently. This isn't just a little grinder that you see on the back of a tractor. This is an industrial grinder that makes a tremendous amount of noise. The other thing is, is I live east of that property. Prevailing winds are from the west, northwest, all summer long. And we can smell the compost. Now, I walked by that site and there is piles on that property that are at least thirty-five feet high. I, I walked by it once, I walked by John's property, which was one of the closest properties to that. And I looked at it and I said, what are they doing back there? It's huge, these piles. So it's not, it's not a little operation, it's a big operation, it creates a lot of noise. The other thing I want to express is the noise of the dump trucks coming in there. It functions as an industrial property. You hear the tailgates on these trucks slamming at six AM in the morning. And quite frankly, I've heard John's wife explain that it's so loud there sometimes, she works from home, or did work from home, and can't even hardly function there, because the house vibrates even. So again, I want to express that this is not a little operation. The other thing I wanted to bring up is it says on November twenty-ninth, an issue went out to everyone to explain that this is gonna happen. I received nothing. I've heard just since then, tonight, that that went out to people within three hundred feet of the property. Well, I had mentioned I lived sixteen hundred and eighty-five feet away and I can hear and feel that vibration sometimes when it's really cranking up. Maybe it's sound vibrations now, but it's, it's loud. So the reason there's probably only two people here to speak tonight is because that, that communication did not go out to everyone, which I feel it should. There's many other issues, I understand that this is just a preliminary part of this process. So I would really like the council to hear all the others' neighbors' concerns about this. And the fact that if you have any allergies, if they're gonna be mixing compost, these mold spores are gonna be floating in the air towards us, which creates health issues as well. I could go on for a little bit longer, but I think you guys get the point, so I'll terminate at this point. Thank you for hearing me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I had for this one, anybody else that was missed?
Can I make one further comment I forgot to make?
If you want to come back up to the night.
Yeah, so there, you know, just, I think one of the council commissioners was. Yeah, so there, you know, just, I think one of the council commissioners was asking about dropping off leaves.
I went on a Washington County Environmental Center website earlier today, and there's five sites available to every Washington County resident for free of charge dumping of leaves, grass clippings, yard waste, everything but stumps. I don't think we care how many stumps when we get, when we do yard work, so there are Arden Hills, Battle Creek, Franken Sims, White Bear Township, and Northern Yard Waste in Hugo, so not right next door to any of us, but how often you actually go to these places, and it's free. So here is a business that you're gonna have to pay to dump stuff, the, our tax dollars already support these communities and through their efforts to create these sites, and I'm sure if you went on Google Maps and looked at any of these sites, you're not gonna find it next door to a residential neighborhood, because that just would be foolish, and the, and the communities know that, so. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll need a motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ray Camp, excuse me, second by Commissioner Stile to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, public hearing is now closed at eight fifty-one PM. At this point, we are back to the commissioners, there is a recommended motion on our screens in front of us.
Mr. Chair, I do believe the applicant would like to address some of the, the public comment concerns that were brought up.
All right, thank you. Before motion, we'll hear back from the applicant, thank you.
To address a couple of the comments that the neighbors has, I actually reached out to the neighbors a couple of times, the behind me. Probably not all, like, the one behind close me, Alex, and the lady I helped her a couple of years ago back when the, the water reached out to her yard, we actually helped her to raise salt, so that way the water not get into the backyard. For the trucking noise, we actually moved the trucking business out of Lake Elmo to Robert, Wisconsin, so we don't have no trucking business in Lake Elmo anymore. The grinding, we grind once a year when there's a large amount, so we, we have a grinder on site, we do it in the business hours, we do it Monday to Friday. One, and like a couple of months ago back, we rented one of top grinders, a bigger machine to be able to get the larger tree, but we do that maybe once every two years, this is what is the noise, but it's once every two years that we do that, we pile the big logs and we get the machine and grind it out. The compost, we try to leave all the trees, we never touch any of the trees in the back, it's a big barrier, the trees to pretend, to prevent that. When there's no leaf in the trees, you can see the pile, but beside that, we try to stay away from the trees, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The commissioners, again, there's a recommended motion there on our screens. Move to recommend adoption of the proposed tax amendment to section one oh five point one-two point six-two-zero, table nine-one, and section one oh five point twelve point one-one-zero, zoning use types and classifications as presented by city staff.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stile, that was Commissioner Jeffrey with the second?
Thank you.
Start discussion, Commissioner.
Yeah, I think we are in an area where this, this does make sense. Do understand there are some concerns within that development of their neighbors, and I hope that those can be addressed and worked out, but I don't see that as a reason to not allow this tonight.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm kind of along the same lines, we're talking about a text amendment. I know there's some other ordinance in place that can deal with some of the concerns that the residents have. And it's unclear, at least at this point, who was, if the houses were built after the fact and it was a due diligence issue, or there's a lot of unknowns there, but again, I, I think that's not really quite the issue tonight.
Can I ask a question, just because I don't know enough about this? When you have a, a business like this, is there a buffer zone, as there would be in other businesses, to the lot line?
Correct, I believe the conditional use permit currently has a buffer requirement. Again, this is a text amendment, so they will come before you if this is approved for a CUP amendment. With that, you can attach conditions, one of those could be a, a buffer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of drafting the proposed tax amendment, language itself, so you said that was done in conjunction with kind of pulling from surrounding cities and areas?
Correct.
Assuming legals had a eye on it as well?
They have not, no. Typically, they, they'd look at changing processes, not necessarily definitions.
Okay, gotcha. Would this have to go up, I mean, it's, because it is changing a use, does this have to go to amending the comprehensive plan as well? Would this end up having to go up to the Met Council by any chance?
No.
Okay. Any additional discussion? I think as we stated, one of the, one of the things here in terms of amending the, providing the tax amendment, there's still the opportunity to put additional, you know, additional pieces on the CUP to address some of the concerns that the residents here brought up, something that I'm sure the city staff and applicant is hers well, assuming this is gonna come back as a CUP pretty quickly, being cognizant and, you know, as we've heard, the importance of being good neighbors, would like to see that when the CUP comes up. Okay, again, not hearing any further discussion, the motion on the table is move to recommend adoption of the proposed tax amendment to section one oh five twelve six twenty, table nine-one, and section one oh five twelve one-ten, zoning use types and classifications as presented by city staff. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thereby closing item four C. When does this go to city council, do we know?
This is slated for January sixteenth.
January sixteenth, thank you. And the same, if you would, more than welcome to say, but if you would like to leave, you're welcome to leave as well. We'll give the room just a moment there to clear out. All right, with that, we have concluded items, all three items within four, we'll move to item five, which is our new and unfinished business. This is the Upper Thirty-third Street Town Home CUP extension request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't have a formal presentation for you tonight. Back in January seventeenth of this year, city council approved resolution twenty-two-three zero-zero-six, which approved a four-unit townhome on Upper Thirty-third Street. City code requires substantial construction within twelve months of the date of approval of the conditional use permit, which, which would be January seventeenth of next year, the upcoming year. The developer submitted a one-year extension request to the city earlier this month. The reasons for needing the extension outlined in the narrative, the site had previously unidentified contamination, which caused significant delays of construction. The developer is currently working with MPCA and through their requirements to bring the land up to compliance to, to then construct the, the four-unit townhome. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the request to extend the conditional use permit based on the reasonable reasons for the extension request. With that, we do have the applicant here tonight, too.
Questions for city staff? I guess what's the, if we don't, if city council doesn't approve an extension, what happens?
The conditional use permit would be expired, and the, the site would remain vacant and in its current condition.
Then they'd have to reapply?
Correct.
Again, okay. Thank you. And would the developer wish to say anything as well?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, my name's Ryan McIllogin, I'm the project manager for this project and owner of Element Design Build. I reside at ten ninety-five Woodhill Drive in Roseville. So, yeah, just to give a little bit of background, so we broke ground on this project after going through the CUP application process in June, and, and basically observed evidence of some potential site contamination. So what we decided to do was hire a local respected environmental engineer to do some additional, additional testing. We dug some test pits and, and discovered that, you know, it was, it was unclear what exactly we were, we were dealing with, so we did testing of that soil, and then, yeah, basically started to look at all of our different options for what we, what we could do with the site. We looked at a lot of different things, consulted with Braun, Intertech, our environmental engineer, to figure out what exactly we were dealing with, and ultimately decided that we didn't want to continue to build the property if we couldn't reliably come up with a plan to ensure the, you know, the safety of the residents, neighbors, and anyone else who would, who would visit or, or live in, in the proposed development. So we voluntarily entered the Minnesota Brownfields program to submit what is, what is called a RAP, Response Action Plan, which outlines exactly what our remediation plan is for that project, and submitted that to MPCA. And so, the extension to the timeframe is basically a function of, you know, that, that process of getting approval through MPCA has taken four to five months from the time that we started it. And so, once we, once we get to the end of that process, we can't break ground now with winter coming up, so that kind of snaps us to, to next spring. So, like I mentioned, our intent is, is only to move forward with this, with an approved RAP from MPCA. We've got initial comments back from them that our RAP meets, meets those standards, and so that should be finalized any day now, and certainly before the, the city council would see this extension request. But other than that, the plan for our actual development hasn't changed in any way. It's still the exact same CUP application that was originally presented to, to this commission and city council, and no changes have been made to the building permit. You know, the, the building permit itself, there, there will be a RAP that outlines the means and methods that we have to, have to execute in order to build our building permit, but other than, other than an approved RAP, there's no changes to our plan. Just need the time to work through the MPCA process to make sure that we're doing everything, everything responsible that we can to make sure we can ensure the safety of future residents. So, pending any questions, that concludes my comments.
So the, you said the assumption is, looks like the RAP will be kind of approved and signed off on. Does a year give you enough time then if we have to wait until the thought to make changes and then be able to move forward with the project?
Yeah, so my understanding is that the, the year would give us enough time to break ground, at which point substantial construction would have, would have commenced, and then, you know, then, then we'll basically be into a period where we can continue to build until the project's complete. We do also have an extension already approved to our building permit that gets us through middle of May, I believe, which is when the permit was issued this year, so there'll be another extension request for that once we reach that timeframe, but we're planning to break ground in mid-April.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Additional questions for Ryan? Thank you much. And then, this isn't a public hearing, but we can open it up to public, Susan, I believe you wanted to speak on this one?
Thank you very much, can you hear me all right? All right, I feel very bad for Ryan and his LLC and the business partners. They've kind of been misled, and they have the pollution issues on Upper Thirty-third Street North. It was a tank farm beside my home, which I've lived at for like fifty-some years, so I kind of knew it was there, and it was brought up at the public hearing. Nevertheless, when the comprehensive plan was written, knowledgeable staff and the understanding of the history and the issues of the city were not utilized. These people that might have known weren't really part of it. A consultant planner from Minneapolis and a small group of residents were charged with the task of crafting a new Lake Elmo comprehensive plan that changed zoning and future land use of the old village and other areas in the city without even thinking about the contaminated land plus the water challenges. This was not the best planning process, health, safety, welfare of the residents should be one, not a Google Earth map overlay to identify how much you could squeeze into an area. Please be aware, many residents attended the comprehensive plan meetings with concerns about some of the land use proposals. The public was told they could not observe, they could observe the meetings, but they could not comment or participate in any of the meetings. That was really disheartening to many of us because we had things that we could bring to that would help them understand what was going on in some areas of the city. This and other parcels of land in our city have issues, the polluted water issue is well documented, as you fellow gentlemen and ladies talked about tonight. That alone should be enough to question if this project should have ever been going forward. The gentleman should get their money refunded to them, the land restored to its original condition. This is a very costly process for everybody. Moving contamination around is not a healthy manner to resolve this unfortunate mistake. This all started in April of twenty-two-three, residents testified against the new infill zoning. June first, the permit from the city was issued, June second, they started rough grading and the pine tree removal. June twenty-third, the large equipment was removed after being idle for a while. I am very thankful and we are blessed that the equipment operator could smell the oil and gas and stop the grading. I'm very thankful that they were very responsible. July tenth, Ryan was kind enough to come and stopped and confirmed the contamination, and I appreciated that. We all make mistakes, and this one should have been avoided. I wish they could get their money refunded, review, correct the plan, this has been a very expensive and stressful situation, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. There is a motion on the table here for us.
Move to recommend approval of an extension to the, of the conditional use permit deadline for the Upper Thirty-third Street Town Home project to January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ray Camp, second by Commissioner Jeffrey to move to recommend approval, discussion?
The MPCA moves very, very slow, so I think it was out of the applicant's hands. The applicant's doing the right thing, could have just banged this thing in there, but stopped and, and chose to go the correct route, so in my opinion, we should grant that extension.
And could also have just walked away and left the contamination as it is, but we're doing the right thing by cleaning it up, thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like applicant's dealing with a total nightmare, this is just a technicality, so, anything that we can do to help. Can you, can you clarify, where did this contamination come from, does anybody know, I didn't catch?
You told, yeah.
Anybody? Oil.
Oil tank, okay.
Yeah, I agree on the, uh, makes sense to the extension. Also want to give a thanks, Susan, much appreciated for your, your commitment to the city and, and the insight and coming and speaking. I think we saw, saw that firsthand here, nice to see a full room and appreciate you sticking around for that as well. Yeah, I'm in favor, makes sense. Get the extension, get the work done. Anything additional? All right, perfect. Uh, motion on the table is to recommend approval, approval of the extension. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously and this will go to city council on the next meeting as well.
January sixteenth.
January sixteenth, all right, perfect, thank you. And Ryan, yeah, you're welcome to head out if you like.
It only gets more exciting.
Uh, with that, we've concluded item five, we're on to item six, uh, which are our communication updates. Uh, it looks like some city council updates initially.
Yes, at the November twenty-first city council meeting, the city council reviewed the comp plan amendment and rezoning for the old city facilities. They voted to recommend approval of, or not recommend approval, they approved the request and that is now, uh, in review by Met Council. Um, so we will update once Met Council, if Met Council approves it.
Do we have an update then in terms of, because I know we weren't planning on anything going there yet, but it's basically kind of waiting on the Met Council?
That would need to be finalized before any R F P would be posted.
Okay, and then is there still gonna be a workshop or anything related to an R F P for that area or?
To be determined.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then upcoming meetings, January eighth and January twenty-second. Um, I believe we have items for both of those, those planning commission meetings. And then February, planning commission is slated to have their, their first joint workshop with city council. So if that doesn't work for anybody, please let me know as soon as possible.
Where did council end up with additional workshops?
So they haven't reviewed the work plan. That joint session is, is when you, you both are gonna be reviewing the work plan together.
Gotcha. Perfect, thank you very much. Uh, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda for this evening. Uh, again, appreciate the commissioners' time for coming out, city staff and members of the public for joining us here this evening. Hope everybody has a good rest of the week. And with that, we will close.